This is a call to order for the special city council meeting on December 20th, 2021. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Before you sit, is there anyone in the audience that would like to say any words of wisdom, whether it be religious or otherwise? If not, I would just ask everybody to give some thoughts. We are in the Christmas season and we know what the Christmas season means to most, but we also realize there's people out there that the Christmas season itself actually is a tough time in their life. Whether they've lost a loved one recently, whether they're sick, lonely. Perfect example is the people in Kentucky. Certainly this Christmas to them is going to be something tough to deal with. So as we get ready for Christmas and all the things that it means to all of us, let's keep in mind that Christmas is an individual thing and what it means to you this year could mean a lot different in the future. Keep that in mind. Please be seated. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Odom, roll call.
Mayor White.
Present.
Vice Mayor Henshaw here. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Kenny.
Here.
Councilwoman Covage.
Present.
Troy Slattery, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Georgina Sid, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Julie Danowski, Records Court.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
And Andrew Hand, City Attorney, is attending by Zoom. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, City Hall Bulletin Board, on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, and was amended on December 16th, 2021, to include backup to item number one.
Thank you, Ms. Odom. Before we get started, just an overview. This is actually a special council meeting, which was called by me and council to approve, or at least consider, the resolution that is on the agenda. The reason that the special meeting was called was to try to get this done before the Marion County meeting tomorrow to let Marion County know where our position is. It is on their agenda tomorrow. And we're also aware that the state legislature is getting ready to convene in, I believe, January 11th. So we want to get this out as soon as we can, so everybody knows what our position is. So the way this would start off, we're going to have public comment on it. If you've signed up, you go in that order. If you haven't signed up, you still will be recognized after those that have signed up. You have three minutes to speak. And then council will discuss and decide whether or not to adopt the resolution. So with that said, if you haven't, the resolution should be available in the lobby. If you don't have one, if we're out of them, let us know. So council, we're going to go forward now. Does council have any comments regarding the agenda?
Yes, sir.
We also, even though this is a special meeting, it does allow opportunity to speak to something outside of the agenda item. So at this time, is there anyone that would like to speak to council about something that's outside the agenda, meaning outside the resolution? Leaves it open if there's just something we need to know or you want to talk to us about. This is your opportunity to do that. Ms. Odom, please note that.
Sir, there's a hand raised.
Is there a hand?
No, I'm not sure if it's outside of the resolution.
You're good.
But tied in with that.
You're good. Just wait till the resolution, you'll be fine. Okay. All right. Ms. Odom, please make note that there was no public comment. All right, we go to agenda item number one, if you have the agenda. And this is the singular item on the agenda. Item number one is a resolution 2021-26 opposing FDOT northern turnpike extension. We, at this time, will accept public comment. Those that have signed up will have the opportunity to speak first, Ms. Odom.
I have Dr. Paul Reinhardt.
Welcome, Dr. Toon Donnell.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Dr. Paul John Reinhardt. I'm a Republican candidate for State House of Representatives, District 34. It's soon to be District 23, that may include the Dunellen area. I live in Beverly Hills in the same house since 1979, when my parents retired from New York City. I support signing the no build resolution. It is a well-settled policy of Florida to conserve and protect its natural resources and scenic beauty in Article 2, Section 7 of the Florida Constitution. So we should support sustainable policies that reduce urban sprawl. One of my favorite presidents was Teddy Roosevelt, a real conservationist. He set aside pristine landscapes for future Americans to enjoy. What would he say today? "The I-75 relief task force comprised of county and city representatives from six counties and other statewide organizations, and concluded that I-75 and other existing road networks should be expanded before the state studies and builds new roads, such as the expanded Suncoast Parkway and the Florida Turnpike Extension." Even the US government is discouraging states from building new highways. A memo issued just last Thursday urges states to fix roads before constructing new ones. Federal Highway Administration Deputy Administrator Stephanie Pollak directed her staff to encourage state and local governments to consider fixing existing roads before building new ones. This turnpike extension will plow through our neighborhoods, demolishing homes and natural lands in its path, separating neighbors. This proposed turnpike extension crosses over the Withlacoochee River, an outstanding Florida waterway, in two different locations. Florida Department of Transportation designs highway stormwater systems so that untreated highway runoff containing roadway pollutants will drain directly into the nearest water body. In this case, the Withlacoochee River, twice. We know what we have in the nature coast. My parents spent their peaceful retirement years in Citrus County for over 40 years to avoid urban sprawl, high car insurance rates, high crime rates. I don't want drug corridors. I don't want human trafficking. I'm for holding the Florida Department of Transportation and the Florida Turnpike Enterprises accountable. Please pass and sign the no build resolution and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. All right, Ms. Odom, who's next?
Peter Rossbeck.
Peter, welcome to Dunellen.
Hi, Peter.
We need your name and address.
Jan Cross.
Son of a gun, yeah. Good to see you.
Peter, we need your name and address.
Peter Rossbeck, and 12345 Southwest 140th Loop, Dunellen. Good morning. I thank you all for actively taking action for this revolution. Revolution, eh? To stop this unnecessary toll road with Dunellen. Your resolution is timely, a step forward to stop a formally thought process for our state and Department of Transportation. A state legislator started the process some years ago to create a toll road from Chieftain to Wildwood without any comprehensive independent study whatsoever. As a result, the Department of Transportation, FDOT, began a process to identify potential routes. The first effort was stalled due to overwhelming public resistance, coupled with the M Corps committee's report that basically said that toll roads should utilize on previous existing roadways. Suddenly, four counties are impacted by a process of identifying these potential routes. The first effort directing these routes forward should utilize improving roadways. Suddenly, four counties are impacted to provide public input for these four possible routes, or corridors, with the state's goal of connecting Chieftain to Wildwood. Now, the shortest distance between Chieftain and Wildwood, of course, would be a straight line. But some of the proposed roads would almost double the travel distance. So one must ask really, what is the state's goal? Perhaps the toll road to Wildwood would bring more traffic to an already congested area. Or perhaps the goal should be for a new road from where the Florida Turnpike curves west in Dade County and connect to the Suncoast Parkway heading north way west of Dunellen. Who knows? There was no study. My point is, the current proposal presented by FDOTA is ill-conceived and simply poorly planned. All four counties need to clearly reject this plan so that the state can go back and do the right thing. The state should commence an independent study determining the need for a toll road. And any other corridors are to work with improving existing roads and connect.
Peter, 30 seconds, okay?
I'll go as fast as I can.
Okay, just sum it up.
I didn't know I would.
Well, we.
And such a study should allow for public input. There was no public input. It's preposterous that the public has no input, or with need, or location. But while these four potential routes are on the table, let's reflect on the irreversible damage that has already been caused to property values of owners anywhere near these proposed routes. Any property near a toll road will have significant environmental impact, noise pollution, air pollution, water pollution, visual pollution, such that the neighboring properties will be virtually worthless. The damage has already been done, folks. Owners and buyers have been frozen from buying as of right now. Thousands and acres of residential, commercial, and agriculture properties are frozen in these four counties until the state withdraws this proposal and starts over right now.
Peter, okay, wrap it up.
To start an independent study, okay?
Okay, Peter, thank you.
If you have time, I have about 30 seconds.
Okay, just please go through it. Everybody says 30 seconds. It turns out to be three minutes.
Three minutes. So for the moment, let me point out how preposterous just one aspect of the route is. We'll make you wonder just who is driving the bus at FDOT, or anyone else, or if anyone is. Go to the Public Communications Department of FDOT and refer to a fellow, I was referred to a fellow named William Burke, who listed to see that any toll road would minimize the impact on environmentally sensitive areas. Well, Mr. Burke never answers his call and never returns his call after numerous calls every day. Nor would he return any message. Perhaps others have had similar questions as mine. Look at the map. If you don't have it, I will provide it. Look at the map in the FDO's own website. Prepared as a directive by the state that identifies environmentally sensitive areas, note that the areas are colored in pink. And these pink areas include all the preserves located in Dunellen.
Okay, Peter.
Really near the end.
You promised me three times already.
Okay, if you have time later.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, who else has signed up to speak? Ms. Odom?
I have Michael McGrath.
Michael, welcome. Name and address, please.
Good morning, folks. How we doing today?
Morning, Michael.
Michael McGrath, 3630 Piazza Drive, Fort Myers, Florida. Anyway, so morning and thank again for having the special meeting today. It's just so quickly and so swiftly. My name is Michael McGrath. I'm an organizer with Sierra Florida and also the No-Rose Rune Coalition. We've been, obviously, I've been very much opposing these roadways for the last two and a half years, back when it was under the vestige of MCORS, and now today with Northern Perp extension. So I just want to thank you all for having such a quick and decisive city council meeting to consider this no build resolution. I think one thing that I want to make very clear is that, you know, we always have a choice. We always have a choice, especially when it comes to road constructions and how we plan our communities and also our transportation corridors. I think we can all agree that Dunellen is making the right choice today to oppose these toll roads and by rejecting this proposal from FDOT. Again, I just want to thank you all for taking such quick and decisive action by considering this no build resolution. We always saw how well attended the city open house was the other week by residents here. It was very clear that folks do not want this proposal within Dunellen or Marion County or anywhere within the nature coast of Florida. You know, I just want to echo again that 93% of the public comments that were submitted to FDOT during the MCORS task force process were opposed to these toll roads. And that's what we found by going through the public record requests with FDOT and going through the painstaking process of tabulating all of those comments from folks. And we know that folks are overwhelmingly opposed. They don't want to lose their lands, or they don't want to lose, not be moved or buy eminent domain. We want folks to stay here, be able to enjoy the quality of life that they already enjoy here in Florida's nature coast. So I think, you know, right now, what the city of Dunellen is doing by considering this no build resolution actually is setting a precedent. It's setting the example that other cities and also counties can emulate. And I want to thank you all for your strong leadership on that front as well. So with that being said, you know, I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays. And, you know, this can be a no build holiday special, to say the least. And I thank you again for considering this resolution today. And I hope together we can create a strong unified front to oppose these toll roads in the future. So thank you again. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and happy new year, okay?
Merry Christmas. A lot of your shirt.
Thank you for your input. Thank you, everybody's input. Ms. Odom, anyone else signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no one else has signed up. Anybody sign up on Zoom?
I don't have any hands raised.
Okay. That is the conclusion of those that signed up. Now, what we always do, people who didn't sign up often hear something and then they decide they want to speak. So we do our best not to close anybody out who wants to speak. Is raise your hand if you would like to speak at this time to the subject. And you will be offered an opportunity to come to the podium. Anyone in the audience would like to speak? Art, name and address. Art, we know, we haven't memorized, but you got to do it for.
Yeah, Art Jones, 12163, coming that way, right here in Dunellen. I went to all the meetings with the turnpike and looked at everything that was proposed. And the no build option is on the table, as is some other alternative routes. I believe if the no build option fails, that it should, then the turnpike should be built on the southernmost route and go directly to Crystal River. As you get off on Wildwood, you take 44 right into Inverness, right into Crystal River. The road corridor is already wide open. It's got four lanes most of the way right now. There's no reason the turnpike couldn't piggyback on that. And then it would take it directly to Crystal River. It could hook up into the Suncoast Parkway, which is already built, already connected to 44. This way, I mean, there's been numerous times when I've come back from Orlando, and what happens? It all backs up. The turnpike's all backing up as you get near 75. It's this big congested mess, time and time again. If there's an accident, you're stuck there for hours. So the turnpike doesn't have to be destructive. It can be positive if it's done right. And I think with enough pressure that we can build it right. It can go directly to Crystal River. Think about it. Now, when you're on the turnpike, you're either going towards Miami, or you're going towards Crystal River. You're either going towards the Atlantic Ocean, or you're going towards the Gulf of Mexico. Both completely different places, both must-see destinations in Florida. Crystal River already welcomes people from all over the world to swim with the manatees. People come from all over Florida and beyond. You know, we've got a beautiful wildlife refuge there. We've got the nature coast. We have industry and jobs built on tourism there. Tourism and visitors can be a green industry when handled right. So, you know, I understand the no build option, but sometimes when I hear the objections, they sound a little hysterical. And it's like, we need good roads. Everybody that came to the meeting today drove a car on a road. And just in the newspaper today, it was, there was an accident on 75 and the traffic was backed up, I think they said, for six hours. So the turnpike, by coming directly along 44, hooking into the parkway, would create a loop. Now, if you're coming from the south of Florida, heading towards Texas, instead of getting off at 75, just stay on the parkway. Stay on the turnpike, takes you over to the parkway, head up 19, and you avoid the whole backup in Ocala and Gainesville, which is one of the big problems. It can also be an alleviator for I-4, going from Tampa to Orlando. Now they come up, cut across, if there's an accident or major problems along those routes. So that's what I think. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Appreciate it. Okay, no, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Dr. Eno?
I'm Bert Eno. I live at 9220 Southwest 193rd Circle in Rainbow Springs. I appreciate Art's point of view, but I disagree with it. That traffic backup that occurs on the turnpike is always primarily people that in fact want to turn on to I-75 and head north. And those people, for the most part, that are on 75, want to continue going north all the way to Atlanta and beyond. If you look at what traffic is up there on I-10 compared to what's on I-75, I-75 is carrying 10 times as much traffic as I-10 is. So it indicates that people getting on 75 want to continue on 75, not turn west someplace. So I don't think the traffic jam has anything to do with the fact that there's no direct route over to the West Coast. When you think about it, I've been searching my mind, trying to figure out why. Why is DOT promoting some kind of a northern extension? The only conclusion I can come to is it's a make-work project for them to put a billion dollars into their pockets to go ahead and continue being unemployed. I pointed this out at the workshop, the fact that none of these turnpike extensions that are being proposed has anything to do with bypassing the congestion around Ocala, because they never converge back onto I-75. They simply take you on toward Tallahassee. And who's going to Tallahassee? Or who needs the turnpike between Tallahassee and Orlando? Maybe some of our legislators who want a fast, quick, fast trip home on the weekends. But I can't think of any other legitimate reason for having these turnpike extensions. No doubt, no doubt, any of them is going to do a lot of damage, particularly the northern two, cutting up Marion County to the extent that I had studied. And from the standpoint of my presidency of the Rainbow River Conservation, they are abominable, because they cut right across the primary recharge basin of the Rainbow River. I think this whole thing is foolhardy, and it's unfortunate that the public is not invited to have input. Only the DOT must report at the end of 2022 to the governor, the Senate president, and the Speaker of the House. And from there, it's all political. And where do we get the input? We have to squawk, such as tomorrow morning at the county commission meeting. They haven't stood up to where they should be. They don't seem to realize they represent all the people of Marion County and not just some kind of a political base. So I encourage people to be there and raise hell tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak to this issue? Okay. Anyone on Zoom that just might have tuned in that would like to speak to it? Ms. Odom? Okay, please note that the public has had opportunity to speak to this issue, and we do appreciate that. And now it's going to be council's turn to discuss this publicly and to eventually decide what we want to do. So we're moving to a proposed motion. Do we have a motion to Resolution 2021-26 be read by title only?
Some of.
We have a second.
Second.
I oppose until we make further edits to the resolution.
We can do that during discussion. We can do that during discussion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Your concern is noted. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye. Most passed unanimously. Now we go to, okay, now we have, now we have the discussion, right?
Well, you just voted to have the resolution read by title only.
Right, okay. So the next motion is I move resolution to be approved.
Sir, I know she'd have to have, she needs to read it.
You need to read the entire thing.
I need to read it by title. But if you want, if you want to take a step back before you vote and have a discussion, if you want to make changes to the title before I read it into the record, I would do it that way.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll backtrack a little bit. Go back to Ms. Covage's point. Is there parts of the resolution we need to discuss to possibly change? Ms. Covage?
Yes, and these are not major changes. They're mostly word and phrase changes. You go to page two, and if you count down 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 paragraphs, it says, "Whereas the city council has received considerable citizen input." I think that's weak wording. I would like to replace it, or rather suggest to replace the word considerable with, "City council has received a massive response from our area citizens."
That's a suggestion. We'll take note. What else?
Also, going down to paragraph 10 on the same page, "Whereas the citizens of Dunellen and the city council value the environmental resources in Marion County, including Rainbow Springs, the Rainbow River, Withlacoochee River, Gothy State Forest, Hualpatacascanet, Nacky Nature Preserve, and the Rainbow River Basin." I think that needs to be inserted there. The Rainbow River Basin and its official aquifer. If we're going to send this, there, a large component of consideration is environmental impact. And so, again, paragraph 10, the third line, paragraph ten, the third line, for us out and the Florida and aquifer, the Florida and aquifer in, and insert Rainbow River Basin, surficial aquifer. Surficial being spelled S U R F I C I A L aquifer. And why this is important is because one of their environmental people could challenge that because the Florida and aquifer is a deep aquifer, a little geology lesson here. There is not one aquifer running across, um, from North Florida southwest to our region. There is that deep aquifer which we call the Floridian aquifer and close to the surface, which is why we have sinkholes and why we have um, direct pollution into our local aquifer is that surficial aquifer is actually very close to the surface. If you drill a well here, like right here where we're standing, you could hit water as close as thirty-five, forty feet down. That is our surficial aquifer. Um, we do know that the Floridian aquifer is very close to the surface here, which is why we have a spring. We have a layer, okay, a layer of containment between the two aquifers. And the surficial aquifer would be that, or aquifer that would be getting the direct pollutants from runoff from highway construction and so on. But I think it's important to insert Rainbow River Basin surficial aquifer. Also, same paragraph ten. Same line, uh, where it begins, Forest, Haltataskanaki Nature Preserve and Florida aquifer. Instead of word, the word lands, how about we insert regional topography of critical importance? Instead of lands, cross out lands and put regional topography of critical importance. This is the last line, paragraph ten, of all which provide valuable resources and habitat to, instead of putting plants and wildlife, insert terrestrial and aquatic life. You have to understand life is as big as something microscopic. Yeah, I'm a science teacher. Go out to the Rainbow River, we scoop up some water, bring it to class, look under a microscope. And what do we have? Lots and lots of organisms that are directly impacted by pollution. And the toxins that are associated with roadways and roadway construction involve petroleum compounds that are um, toxic as well as even the dirt that is moved releases more phosphates into the superficial, rather the surficial aquifer. Okay, so we need to make note, it's not just the big guys that we can see out there, like the fish, the snakes, the turtles, the otters, and so on that are affected. You need to look at the microscopic life out there, so. Again, terrestrial, terrestrial and aquatic organisms or life. You got that? It's a little complicated. Okay, so when you say terrestrial and aquatic life, you're encompassing everything that is out there, not just what we can see, those things that start at the very bottom of the food chain. You gotta mention those little guys, because when problems start to happen with our river, that's where it starts. With those microorganisms and also with the small aquatic plant life that is out there. Okay, so, gotta protect them. Page three, uh, fifth paragraph. This is going to be pretty simple and this will be the end of my comments as far as edits. Fifth paragraph, um, I'll read the paragraph. Whereas it would be expected that the construction phase in the finished asphalt lanes of the posed northern turnpike extension through the Denellen region would carry runoff and its toxins into the surface waters and aquifer pathways of the region. Thus compromise, greatly compromising the health and reproductive success of cross out waterfall. Um, and put, you read the line, and reproductive, and reproductive success of aquatic terrestrial wildlife, submergent and aquatic plant life. You gotta insert plants in there. They're part of the food chain. Okay, and I can give you a whole lesson on that. Those environmental persons that are on the payroll of Florida DOT need to be impressed by what we, what we understand about our river and our river basin and everything that's included with it. So again, the last line would read, and reproductive success of cross out waterfall, foul and all wildlife within the region. Uh, aquatic terrestrial as well as submergent and aquatic plant life. Uh, submergent plant life are those plants that live, their roots are within the water, but their plant structure is above the water. Okay, so.
Jan, why wouldn't you just keep waterfall in there and then include your language after that? Why?
Okay, that'd be all right, too.
Everybody knows what waterfall is. I'm sure if everybody knows what the other stuff is.
That's true.
You can leave waterfall in there.
I keep thinking aliens. And that's, that's it. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Counselwoman, would you mind repeating just that last phrase? I want to make sure I have it just the way you stated it.
This is Andrew, our attorney, I believe.
Yes.
Correct.
Andrew, can you repeat what you said? Because we didn't understand you, sir.
I was asking, uh, Councilwoman Cabbage, just to restate that last line one more time, so I can make sure I have it just as it was stated.
Certainly. Okay, so the last line, paragraph five, and reproductive success of waterfall, all wildlife within the region as well as all aquatic and terrestrial plants, submergent, I'm all messed up now because we crossed that waterfall. Hang on. And reproductive success of waterfall as well as all wildlife with the region, including submergent and aquatic plant life. Turn it up a little bit.
Ms. Cabbage, is that it?
That is it. Thank you.
Staff, um, do you have the recommendations?
I do.
Okay. Uh, it just seems, Ms. Cabbage, that your language just makes the resolution a little bit more scientific, a little bit more detailed. I don't see anything myself in what you've said that changes the intent or the purpose of the resolution. This makes it a little tougher to read if you're not a science teacher, that's all.
The point is that the people that are going to be reading this are, are environmental scientists.
Okay.
They know we're not playing with amateurs.
All right, Ms. Kenny, do you have any comments?
Well, I certainly cannot, I don't have the expertise to uh, know exactly what has just been said in terms of broadening the scope. But Dr. Eno is here and I would appreciate it if he could analyze it a little bit.
I mean, and I appreciate that, but I think we kind of, I mean, I even understood sidekeeping whenever she said terrestrial, I keep seeing little green aliens. But that's, um, but I, I mean, I think anybody who's reading it will understand that there's a underlying, the underworld that you and I don't see.
Just so that there isn't something that he seriously would object to, because well, I know that it's broadening the scope and I certainly appreciate what she is doing.
Yeah.
Because I think it is very meaningful. I just want to be sure that it is acceptable uh, by most scientists. I am not a scientist.
If counsel does not.
And evidently, I, I would think.
Yeah, counsel does not object. Dr. Eno, do you have anything to comment on? This coverage's changes.
For, you know, nine two two zero southwest one ninety-third circle again. Uh, I still live there. I had a lot of an opportunity to put into this resolution. And uh, Bill Viver and I inserted some language which somehow or other was left out, that was more specific to what kind of uh, creatures are out there that we need to protect. And uh, I had talked to Mayor White about my reservations concerning fleshing out this uh, uh, resolution. And I came to the conclusion, it's not worth it. That all of the things that you've just said, Jan, are, are good points to make, but this resolution doesn't have to be perfect. It just needs to be done and done now in order to impress the county. All of what you have said here, I don't think it has the value or need to push, push this off and have it go back and be rewritten again, or we'll be still here a month from now trying to get something done. So I appreciate, I respect what you have to say, but I disagree with the timing of the, of doing this. I'd like to see this approved now, as is for that matter. The one thing I would agree with is the aquifer is very big and we could narrow that down to the recharge basin of the Rainbow River. But other than that one comment, I disagree that all of this detail needs to be changed.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Kenny, Ms. Kenny, anything else to say?
I found, as I said earlier, I don't have the expertise that either of these two people have. Uh, Dr. Eno, I think made a very legitimate point that uh, it is necessary to do this in an expedient way. And I think the comments made by Councilwoman Cabbage, uh, really should be applauded that she is looking at it at the depth that she is and has, that we have someone on the council with that kind of uh, expertise and I appreciate it very much.
Ms. Williams?
I really don't have anything to say. I, I, instead of using the word massive, what about substantial amount? That's the only thing that I and I'm like Louise. I don't have the expertise either, so, and to get it done expedient, then we need to do it.
Okay. Nice, Mayor.
I, I'll just, shorter is sweeter and too technical when you're, I mean, I, I mean, I agree with you that what you're saying, but again, shorter is sweeter. I mean, if I had my preference, I would have put this all into one paragraph, no build. Common sense. Um, you know, so I, I, you know, I mean, really, I think it's too wordy, being four pages. Um, but, and again, I agree with you, but we just keep adding words and massive, substantial. They all mean the exact same thing, a whole bunch of people. So I would like to go ahead and call this to a, of a begin.
Okay, um, my comment on it is already been, it's just echoing with has been said. Ms. Cabbage, what you're saying is true, but this isn't a sci- scientific analysis. It's a statement. Um, there is always a danger when you make things too technical and, and kind of a little tough to read where you're using concepts and words that aren't normally understood. And when you put too much of that into the main thrust of the thought, it makes your, your main thrust, your thought not recognized. I think where the resolution is, is basic. It is, it's just making a statement and I think it covers the basis, but we don't want to make you feel that what you're saying isn't correct. I just don't think it's necessary myself. My only comment, uh, on my end of it is I, looking at the resolution, uh, I've talked with Mandy and I've talked with Andrew. I would recommend that we clarify in a resolution. It, it says that we are against the northern turnpike ex- extension. You can see it right there with the no build that's also included. No build option for the northern turnpike extension. I've asked Andrew to put some language in there that clarifies that we are against all the extensions, just not the northern extension. If you look at the maps that are out there by FDOT, they actually have four of them named. The most southern one that's in Inverness is called the southern. The one that hugs up close here in the Holder area is considered the central one. And then we have Northern A and Northern B. So I would hate going forward for someone to pull up our resolution and say, uh, Denellen just says they're against the northern. No, uh, so Andrew has to put some language in.
Yes, he did amend the title and I have that pulled up on the screen for you there. You can see the red line. Um, he has added all proposed term right, turnpike routes, including the northern turnpike extensions that may be proposed. I agree with that.
So that, uh, we all know when it comes to law and legislation, you have an intent when you pass it. And then somewhere in the future, people go back to that law that was passed and they try to look for different ways to interpret it. And I don't want to have any possibility that someone can say Denellen was okay with the uh, Citrus County routes. They're just against the northern. So I think this takes care of that.
So if you don't have any other changes to the body of the resolution, if you're going to leave that as it is, you have a motion to read this by title in a second. You have discussion. Now, if you'll vote on that again, then I could read this by title as it's amended. I will amend my motion to include the option for all proposed turnpike routes, including the northern turnpike extensions.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I am.
Propose passes unanimously. So if you're following along with us, now we're going to, that was.
Read the title.
Okay, please, Mandy.
Resolution.
I want you to read.
Okay, please read it.
Resolution number RS twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six. A resolution of the city of Denellen, Florida, requesting the Honorable Governor Ron DeSantis and the Secretary of the Florida Department of Transportation to direct the department to adopt a no build option for all proposed turnpike routes, including the northern turnpike extensions that may be proposed to run through or near the city of Denellen, as well as among other communities that would also be negatively impacted by the proposed routes. Directing the city clerk to provide a copy of this resolution to the governor, the secretary of FDOT, the president of Florida Senate, the speaker of the House of Representatives, Florida House and Senate representatives, the Marion County Board of County Commissioners, the FDOT project manager for Florida's Turnpike Enterprise and other agencies, organizations and individuals as directed by the city council and setting an effective date.
Very good. Thank you. Now we go to the next proposed motion. I move resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-six be approved.
So moved.
Second discussion. Um, I just, during the discussion play, phase, I just want to just go over what we're really dealing with here, so you can know the magnitude of it. Kind of addresses a little bit of what Mr. Jones uh, talked about and the repercussions of that toward Denellen. So Mandy, if you can just start off with just a couple of pictures. This won't be long, but I think it's important.
Is this a picture of traffic over there on I seventy five?
You kind of.
Let's all close our eyes and just imagine it, because we all can see it. We've all sat in that traffic.
Hey, I recently experienced it, so.
Okay, uh, just going through Google and looking at, I thought this was pretty interesting right here. This is when the Florida turnpike opened. Looks like January twenty-fifth, nineteen fifty-seven. This is when the Florida turnpike opened, looks like January twenty-fifth nineteen fifty-seven. It's a long time it's been there. I remember hearing the state promise. That once it was paid for with tolls, they would make it free. Well, that. That hasn't happened. Okay, and you got a second one? That's actually it's under construction. You can see what it does to a forest area and a natural area. During the period of construction, it's probably a thousand foot wide as it cuts through whatever it's cutting through. With years of equipment staying in those same areas. We've all seen. Good on the home of Sasa right now. You can see what's going on there, just years of this going on. So this gives you. An idea what the scar would be coming anywhere through. Here it is. This is the turnpike being constructed, Andy. That also gives you a visual from up above. It gives you an idea how big it is. There's a picture of the turnpike, the two lanes. You can see certain areas where they have a separation of lanes. But you can just see this isn't just a little county road that comes through the area. This is a massive. Big project that puts that right on the doorstep of the know and. Here's here's just another picture fairly close to us of what the turnpike looks like. Please note the overpasses. Wherever the turnpike passes county roads or roads are established. Either have to build an overpass or the turnpike itself goes over the roads. Usually there's an overpass. Love it. So some of the recommended routes like forty, forty-one, four eighty-eight, two hundred. It would also include the construction of overpasses. Okay, Mandy. That's another aerial picture. I think it's significant. You can just see as far as you can see the incredible. Swath of land that just goes through whatever is in its way, whether it be farmland, forests. Private homes. There it is. That's what that's what that's what this would look like if it's approved. Okay, Mandy. Here is another picture of the overpasses. Mandy. There we go. This is when you have accidents and stuff on the turnpike. This is what it what it leads to. Here again, we're directing some a turnpike toward us. That you could actually have these situations with accidents. Okay, Mandy, there's another picture of what it's like if you ever get caught in one. This is another. This is what you would be looking at for several years while this project's going on. Driving around, I I envisioned forty-one looking someone like this when they connect forty-one into. The turnpike, whether it's north of us or south of us, you would have this to deal with. For several years as goes on. So you see McDonald's. This is this is forty-one in the future. If we get involved with us. Next. See plenty of those for a long period of time. Next. There's a picture of it, what it looks like at night. We're talking about a turnpike that is scheduled to be up where forty goes into forty-one. Right up there by Juliet Falls or just south of us in the Hernando area. This, this is, this is what the state's willing to give us for the idea to create more traffic flow and. Hurricane relief and all that sort of stuff, business. Okay, Mandy. Here's also something you deal with. Yours, you also get the pleasure of having billboards. There's a picture of the billboard center section of of the turnpike. So you not only. Get the turnpike going through your area and changing the culture of your area, but you you get the added benefit of of the billboards. There again is kind of a finished. What it looks like. Okay, man.
That's it.
Right to can can you throw show up the map of the corridors? I think that's really important off of those.
So we have a vote?
Yes, this is my discussion. Here's the corridors. If you can make it as big as possible, Mandy. Okay, if you look at those corridors. If you go through the southern one. That you see where Dun Ellen is, you pump that up as much as you can, man. Even the southern one that starts at Wildwood and goes to inverse, it eventually goes straight north. To Dun Ellen, Dun Ellen's area where it hooks into that purple area. Where that purple area is, is approximately where Holder is. Somewhere in the Holder area. So whether it's either one of those southern ones, someone who would say the southern route's the best because it's further from us and all that sort of stuff. It's not exactly true. It might start off further from us, but it's heading straight to us and it's gonna hook into that. Center corridor. So you and and here's what's terrifying about it. Forty-one, which goes right through the middle of it, most likely would be in access to the turnpike. So we have twenty thousand cars driving through Dunell and right now a traffic study just showed us per day. And now forty-one would be a main route to get to the turnpike. Along with the possibility of two hundred. Then if you go to the northern routes. Possible entrances would be four eighty-eight. Forty and forty-one. So no matter how you slice it and dice it, if you look at it just from the the traffic and the growth aspect. Not the environmental argument. Dun Owen will. The traffic, if you think the traffic is increasing right now, it will really be something, something else. So. Then Ellen's position is that no matter any of these routes are chosen. Dun Owen will be very much impacted, much different than what our culture is, much different than our. Ecology-based mindset. This is a direct affront on everything that I know and is about. So that's my discussion aspect of it. Is there any other discussion? Before we come to a vote.
Counsel? Yes. Yes, Mayor, one thing to consider, the council has read a. Modified or amended title. I think some direction to staff then to make the. Rest of the body of the resolution consistent with that title would then be advisable, and that would just be addition of. And several of the whereas clauses as well as in the section one. Just all proposed turnpike routes, including the northern turnpike extensions. So anywhere you see that phrase. It's just going to be repeating that all those proposed routes, so that way it's clear in the title and in the body that that's what you're opposing.
I'll amend my motion to include that, Andrew.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So what that does, Andrew, it directs you to clarify wherever you need be that we're opposed. Our no build includes all, all of the ones that are currently under study.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Miss Miss Odom, are we ready for a vote? Okay, all in favor? Oppose. Motion carries. What's left to be done?
I'm with Special City Council, may be adjourned.
Before we have a second. Before we vote on that, I just want you to say, Mandy, is it gonna be possible for me to sign that? Sign the resolution this morning?
Probably in about fifteen minutes after I've had a chance to go through and make sure all the the areas that we've discussed have been changed.
So my intent is, if you want to hang around and. Watch me sign it. I I plan on signing this thing before we leave the building. So we have a motion to adjourn a second. All in favor?
Merry Christmas, everybody.